Third, 2020 Warren County Planning Commission Meeting, Warren City County Planning Commission, excuse me. And Monica, if you would call the roll, please.
Sir, Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We want to thank everybody for being here tonight and coming out in this weather. And thank you, Commissioners, for being here tonight. And so we have the minutes of our January 20th, 2022 meeting. Are there any questions about those minutes? I would call for a motion.
That was moved.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Hamp, we enter our public meeting tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chair Warren, I have a request that you order that the record for each case include all the relevant statutory, regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications of staff witnesses. Finally, I'd ask that you administer those to those witnesses.
Do I swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have our subdivision site development plans in your packet. Are there any questions? If none, they will, they will stand as, as, as you have read through them. There's no old business tonight, is that right, ma'am? So we enter into our first public hearing tonight, 2022-01-DP. Curtly Way Property Investments LLC, care of D. Hutchins, have filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions on a tract of land containing approximately 2.93 acres located at 600 Curtly Way. This property is owned RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential with a General Development Plan. Rachel.
Thank you, Chair Warren. As you mentioned, the property is located on Curtly Way. It was rezoned to RM3 in 2008. The application this evening is proposing to amend the development plan to allow the conversion of the existing clubhouse, which is located here, into residential space for two additional residential units, bringing the total permitted number of units up to 26. Also proposed for the amendment this evening is to eliminate the required 25-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property and reduce the number of plantings required within such buffer. Instead, the applicants would like to adhere to the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance, which would include a 10-foot landscape buffer. I'm going to jump to page three, and you'll see the proposed changes to the development plan conditions. Those are located on page three, about midway down. The main two to focus in on are number three and number five. The other items that are proposed to change are just housekeeping items, but number three and five outline, outline those changes to allow the increased number of units and make amendments to the landscape buffer. On page four, you'll find the applicant's justification to amend the development plan. I'm not going to read that, but it's there for your reference. And then I'm going to go back to page one and just look at a couple of things under our points to consider, mainly number three. We're just noting that the property does not currently comply with existing binding elements regarding required landscape buffers and the required number of plantings. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development plan amendment, including the increase in the total number of units, a reduction in landscape width, and the required number of plantings, is compatible with the surrounding area. And if the development plan amendment is approved, the site would comply with the minimum zoning ordinance requirements as long as supplemental plantings are installed around the perimeter of the property in deficient areas and as long as a new plot is recorded to amend the current drain adjustment. I think that's the staff report in summary, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Is this, Rachel, is this just really kind of a house cleaning? I mean...
The landscaping is trying to clean up some deficient items on the site, and then the, the new proposal is just the, the conversion of the, the space here.
They just want to convert the clubhouse to two more units?
Yes.
Okay. But, yeah, because it's...
And, and the current binding element's limited to 24. There's already 24 units, so they had to apply to them in the development plan. So we thought we'd iron out all the other issues at the same time.
The, the landscape buffer is the compliance issue that we're addressing?
Yes.
And so currently, is it encroaching? Why are we moving it back?
Currently, the requirement is 25 feet, but if we jump back to the aerial view, you can see that there's some patios and fencing and some things that have encroached into that 25-foot buffer area. So they're proposing to remove that requirement, but then still follow the minimum 10-foot buffer in the ordinance and install some supplemental plantings, because what is currently planted does not meet the minimum requirements.
So if we were...
They didn't build it.
Pardon me?
They didn't build it.
Right.
Okay, so we're just cleaning up something that was done.
So would this bring it into compliance?
It would, yes. As long as, what I just noted in item three on page one, as long as they do those handful of things, then they would be in compliance. This is kind of step one toward that.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Are the applicants here or their representative would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Yep. If you'll come to the microphone, please. State your name and your address.
E. Hutchins. I live at 114 Gettysburg Drive in Hodgenville, Kentucky.
Hutchins, you swear to tell the truth tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments you would like to make about this amendment to the application?
Just wanted to say that, just share our thinking on it. We've had the property for a couple of years. The, the clubhouse has never been utilized really as a clubhouse. It's basically an empty building that Mike and Yvonne Heimer had used for some family functions. They're the ones that previously owned it. And so in the two years, we had one request to use it for a birthday party, which we, we did. But we have such a large list through our management company here in Bowling Green that are needing, you know, housing. So we looked at what would be the most feasible way of, of utilizing that property. And we looked at a three-bedroom, two-bath. That wasn't allowed under the rules, so we went to a one-bedroom, one-bath. And we just felt like it could be a better use of the, of the space.
So you understand the, the landscape requirements that are needed for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One last question. So if you convert this, is it your view that you have adequate parking to, to service the, the new units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hutchins, any other questions for the applicant tonight?
Mr. Hutchins, what, what is the timeframe on proposed development of it, of things?
We would, once approved, we would probably try to have it done within about four months. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for driving from Hodgenville tonight.
Yes, sir. My wife wasn't too pleased with it, but I'm glad I made it. Thank you.
You'll get home in time. Pick us something home. Take something back to it.
Is, is there anyone in the audience that is in opposition to this request? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed development plan amendment, docket number 2022-1-DP, based upon the testimony. Document presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items presented by the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Mr. Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and it's final action. Our next two items tonight are 2022-01-ZBG. Robert E. Petrie, Testimony Trust, care of George D. Lawson, and Robert and Vicky Shadoon have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately point, 0.17 acres located at Zero State Street, formerly 636 State Street at the corner of State Street and each East Seventh Avenue from general business to RM4 multifamily residential with a general development plan. If so approved, the next item would be 2022-V01. Robert E. Petrie, Testimony Trust, care of George D. Lawson, and Robert and Vicky Shadoon have filed an application for variances on the properties located at Zero State Street, formerly 636 State Street at the corner of State Street and Seventh Avenue. These properties are currently zoned general business. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. As you mentioned, this application involves the property at the corner of State Street and East Seventh Avenue. The proposal involves rezoning the property to RM4 in order to develop three multifamily residential units on the property. Jump to the proposed site plan. There's also a variance request to allow a two-foot setback along State Street and East Seventh Avenue. That would be a variance of 23 feet from the required 25-foot front yard setback that is typically required. Here's a building elevation for your reference as well. And let me jump to page three, and we will look at the proposed development plan conditions. Number one requires a minimum building height of 33 feet. Number two addresses building orientation along State Street and East Seventh Avenue. Number three outlines the requirements for building materials. Number four limits the location of parking to be to the rear. Five looks at access to the property. Six requires underground utilities, and seven requires a minimum of 20% open space. On page, I guess if we jump to page four, we have the variance findings for your reference. Again, that's for the front setback line along State Street and East Seventh Avenue. The applicants provided justification for that variance request. That is listed on page five for your reference. And with that, I'll summarize what our points to consider on page one. The application does comply with the majority of the review criteria that the staff evaluated during the review process, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the Planning Commission. I know I went through that quickly, but I'll go back and detail anything that we need to, or answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners?
Rachel, the 23-foot setback, really, that just puts it pretty much in line with the view, doesn't it?
Yeah, I guess in this, this area, it's kind of unique in that we're downtown, so we would generally encourage that buildings be pulled up closer to the roadway. Unfortunately, the only way to accommodate this request was with the RM4 zone, and there's no way around the variance, because in RM4, the setback is 25 feet, even if you're downtown, so.
Rachel, would you go back to that, to that elevation? So in my view, that's a very attractive elevation for, for a building in that location. Is there any way we can incorporate, first, I guess we got to, we got to make sure that the client, or the applicant actually intends to build that structure, but I'd love to see something incorporated into the DPC that says, that's really what we're going to build. Hamp, is that, assuming the applicant is amenable to that, is that, is that a doable thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, it's now your turn.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any other questions for this tonight? Thank you, Rachel. If the applicant is here and would like to make comments, we come to the microphone. Your name, your name and address, please, sir?
Robert Shadoon, 3349 Red Oak Court, Bowling Green.
Robert, swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
So, and I don't intend, I don't intend to labor with any rambling statement, but I would like to answer any questions that you all have. But very briefly, my wife and Vicky and I have for some time looked at intending to move downtown, relocate to downtown Bowling Green, and haven't quite found a property that suits us particularly. And we saw this lot and kind of had a vision so that this would be a property that we're intending to live in one of the three units. Probably that unit would be a larger apartment or, and whether this is apartment or condominiums, we haven't really settled on that. Mr. Graham, to answer your question, this is a very preliminary drawing. We're still working out floor plans and, and frankly, this one came about as one iteration that I threw in, and after I saw it, I was like, yeah, I like that, but it looks like a box within a box to me right now. And so I would like best I can not to get too, too tied down to that, but it is our intention to build a modern-looking, large square building that will be compatible with the adjacent properties that are at the view. I mean, that's, that's the style we intend to go for. We intend to have a third-floor balcony that will look out over the Circus Square Park, and, and having balconies and access and lighting and, and windows to the front. All of that is certainly something that we fully intend to incorporate. I would be hesitant to commit too much to exactly what it's going to look like.
And so I appreciate that. Given that this is preliminary, I understand you've got some, some pretty stringent items in your DPCs already, and, but if this was the building, that's a very attractive, let me say it this way, that, that architecture, I think, is, is, is a very attractive product. And given that you're going to end up somewhere in that direction, I find that very encouraging. So I'm good with that.
Commissioners, any other questions for Robert?
I have one. Mr. Shadoon, will the balconies be also on the back or just the front part of this structure?
My personal view right now is that, because right now, the orientation, there would be three apartments in this. There will be a small apartment on the first floor fronting Circus Square Park. On the second and third level will be a, an apartment that will be on the, basically the front half of the building, and then the back half of the building on the second and third floor would be a second, a third apartment. I would anticipate that that third apartment would have a balcony that would overlook Seventh Street. I'd really think that probably needs something to give it a little bit more excitement back there.
Second question, is the small area behind the building, is that going to be parking, or will it be street parking?
It'll be onsite parking, and actually, the, we anticipate the, the two, the second, third-floor apartments having garage parking. And in addition to parking, there's a parking lot outlined there.
It's a very contemporary-looking building, nice style.
We can pull it off?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Shadoon? Thank you, Robert, for your time. Is there anyone in the audience tonight in opposition or questions for this proposed zoning map amendment and variance? Hearing none, we'd call for a motion for the zoning map amendment, and if approved, then we will discuss the variance.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with, in condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2022-1-ZBG, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Mr. Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion has been approved for the zoning map amendment. We would call for a motion on the variance. Make the motion to approve the request for a variance at Zero State Street, docket number 2022-V01, a variance of 23 feet from the required yard setback of 25 feet along State Street and East Seventh Ave. The testimony presented in the public hearing has shown that granting this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, and will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable certain set of requirements for the zoning regulations.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gay. Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and it's final action. The first item will go to the Bowling Green City Commission, and then variance PC final action. Our next item tonight is 2022-02-Z County. Leroy Cole and F. Scott Milligan, trustee for Sandra Cole, have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 4.97 acres located at 7, 7516 and 7530 Gotts Hydro Road from agriculture to our rural residential with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. As you mentioned, the property is located on Gotts Hydro Road. There is currently an existing home, and what you'll see in the aerial is a mobile home. It's my understanding in speaking with the applicant that that has been dismantled, and that all that currently remains is the frame and trailer. The proposal involves rezoning the property to rural residential in order to subdivide an additional building lot. The current residence is proposed to remain. The proposed development plan conditions are on page three. Number one addresses minimum home size for any new residents on the property. Two also outlines permitted building materials for any new home constructed on the property. Number three essentially exempts the current home from requirements number one and two in the event of casualty. So if it was involuntarily destroyed or removed, it can be built back in its current form. However, if it was voluntarily removed, it would have to comply with number one and two. Number four addresses access to the property. Five includes considerations for tree preservation. Number six looks at requirements for onsite septic systems. Number seven includes considerations for the existing historic home. Again, that's proposed to remain at this time. Jumping back, I'm going to just look at page one with our points to consider. The staff found that the application complies with the majority of the review criteria that was assessed in, in our review of the application. And then last, as always, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or go through any of the staff report in greater detail if needed.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
So the DPCs leave the exterior of the structure pretty open. Would, when I say open, there, there are none. Would that be compatible with the, with the area?
Yeah, if you look, it looks like the bottom of page two, we've outlined that in the area, the current residence has an exterior comprised of aluminum siding and a plain-faced block foundation. Other homes in the area are mainly vinyl, with a few comprised of a combination of wood, metal, alumina, aluminum, and masonite siding, and that home foundations are a mix of brick, stone, poured concrete, plain-faced block, split-faced block, slab, and post-imper. So it's my opinion that that is pretty consistent with what's out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Rachel. Is the applicant here, and anything they would like to add, please? If you would state your name and your address, please?
My name is Sherri Vincent, 232 Multry Court, Bowling Green, Kentucky. I'm here as a power of attorney for both Leroy Cole and Scott Milligan.
Thank you for being here tonight. Swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I really don't have, I mean, Rachel pretty much outlined it all. You know, Mr. Cole's wanting to keep his home. In order to keep his home, he's going to have to sell some land off. In order to sell some land off, we've got to be here. So we're here. Any questions?
I think that's pretty simple.
I think it really is.
I like that summary. Do you want to replace any of our staff?
It's pretty simple, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that is in opposition to this tonight? Would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with, in condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2022-ZB County, based upon a testimony and documents presented in a public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Motion's approved, and we'll go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you for your time tonight, ma'am. Our next item tonight is 2022-03-ZBG. Elijah Properties LLC, care of David Whitty, has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 8.663 acres located at 2410 Fitzgerald Industrial Drive from RS1A, single-family residential, to RM2, two-family residential, to RS1C, single-family residential with a general development plan. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. As you mentioned, in your description, the property is currently split-zoned with a designation of RM2 and RS1A. The proposal this evening is to rezone the property to RS1C in order to develop the property with a twin home in addition to the existing residence. That is shown on this exhibit here. So you'll see the existing residence on the right-hand side, and there's a proposed twin home on the left. So that would include a total of three homes on the property. Looking at the development plan conditions on page two, number one requires that all new utility lines be located underground. Number two, no building shall exceed two stories in height. Number three requires that the exteriors of all structures be comprised of 90% brick, stone, cement board, LP smart siding, or other modern masonry material, and that no plan or split-faced block shall be utilized. Number four requires that any new structure face the road and have a 40-foot front building setback. Number five limits the development to a maximum of three residential units. Number six addresses sinkholes. Seven looks at access to the property. Eight requires a minimum home size of 1,040 square feet with an attached one-car garage. Number nine requires that the property be developed with no less than 40% open space. And last, number 10 requires that all reasonable efforts be made to save healthy trees within 10 feet of property lines, 5-inch caliper and greater, as measured 12 inches above the ground. Going back to page one, just a couple of points for the commission to consider. The first is that the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and a majority of the review criteria for site design, with considerations noted regarding tree preservation and open space. And then last, compatibility should be determined by the Planning Commission. I'll be happy to go through the staff report in greater detail if needed, but otherwise, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ra, thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, and any comments you would like to make? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the microphone. Yes, sir. Your name and address?
David Whitty, 561 Linkside Lane.
You swear to tell the truth, Mr. Whitty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything you would like to add to this?
The only thing I can say is that this used to be my grandmother's property years ago. It's been in our family for quite some time. After she passed, it went to my father, and he's just gotten older and doesn't want to mess with investment property anymore. So now that I have it, I, I think that Rachel did a good job of explaining what I'm trying to do. And, you know, I've been here before a few times, and, I mean, everything that you all have ever approved, I, I followed through with exactly what was discussed here, and I've put together a quality product, and I intend to do the same here.
Thank you, Mr. Whitty.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that has questions or opposition to this request? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the microphone, please. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Allison. I live at 2325 Bellevue Court, adjacent to the backside of this property here.
Swear to tell the truth, sir?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of a few of my residents that are of further in age that weren't able to attend the first to attend the first meeting and hoped to come this evening, but were unable to. But some of the concerns that we have, one being that we are a single-family residence and I understand that, you've heard this time and time again, hey, we're a single-family residence, we don't want to see something different, multiplex, things like that. But we'd also like to maintain the integrity of that in our community. And I noticed that you guys had put a hold on the Covington and Magnolia neighborhoods as well as making those multifamily units over there as well since the tornado had passed through. I'm hoping that maybe you all may take consideration of that as well for our neighborhood, Crestmore neighborhood, in making sure that it stays intact with what it was to begin with. Another cause for concern that I have here with this proposition is that that house has been inhabited for, since I know. I retired from the Marine Corps several years ago and since I moved in, never seen anyone maintain any residence there. That house sits on top of a cave, a cave which the city also utilizes for storm drain runoff that goes through my backyard. I'm kind of proud of the house I live in because it's kind of historical in the community from the Livingston perspective. It's called the Livingston Cave Entrance. He was a pillar in the community for Western Kentucky, establishing the musical arts portion of it. So I'm proud of my house that I live in and the fact that I've got a cave in my backyard, which is kind of cool. But a factor of it is, the cave does in fact run directly underneath that residence and it does seem to be sinking into that. What would they do with that house if they proposed to build something adjacent to it? And what's the proposed outcome for the home that's been empty for these years? Is it just going to remain empty in our neighborhood? Is it just going to grow over? Is it going to be an eyesore? Like, there's some serious issues that I'd like to see asked and reviewed over the property.
So would it be a fair summary to say that your concerns are, one, drainage? And then, secondly, the appearance of the existing home or the appearance of the new structure?
Just the appearance of it, sir, but kind of the integrity of the community that we have already.
They are not multifamily. They're going to be single-family or two-family residential.
Technically, that is not what we would consider multifamily in a zoning.
Okay.
Rachel, is that-
Well, I can appreciate that perspective of it, but what it would become-
And make sure I understand this correctly, are the driveways, the driveways are going out to Fitzgerald, right?
Yes.
Okay. And are you, and I apologize for asking this, the neighborhood you're talking about, is it's what's behind the house?
So in that top right corner, you see the cul-de-sac? I'm sorry, am I talking into the microphone here? The cul-de-sac backs up to that property there?
Right here.
That's too close, yeah. Can you go back to that one, though, and I can maybe describe it? That's all right. So Mr. Niebel, that it says right there, zoned RS1A, I'm to, if you're looking at this, to the left of him, that's my residence, to the left of-
I think Rachel's got a pointer there. That would help us make sure we understand what you're referring to.
Mr. Niebel lives here and my house is just adj- to there. Our property lines adjoining here.
Not directly behind.
Not directly behind it, but-
But these driveways will not open back into that, into your neighborhood, correct?
No, sir, they would not.
And let me also say thank you for your service.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, so they do not actually come back into the neighborhood, they go out to Fitzgerald?
Sir.
Okay. Does it help you to know and to understand that even though these are two properties that are adjoining, they're not multifamily? So that you would have two individual property owners here? I want to state that as a question, that is correct, right?
You could sell each lot and half of the structure individually.
Yeah.
That's the line running-
Or one person could own both, right?
Right. But it's on two separate deeds and could be, and would be treated just like two people could own two houses next door to each other. These just happen to be attached. These two have what's called a parting wall and the thinking there is you have two individual homeowners who both have an interest in the neighborhood as well and want to maintain their property rather than a multifamily structure that is primarily used as rental. There's no guarantee that this could never be a rental property, but it is designed to be a single-family structure. Is that helpful in some way?
Sir, and I can definitely appreciate that.
Okay.
And I can appreciate somebody, you know, establishing a foothold in our neighborhood to grow from there.
So I want to circle back and address your drainage concerns.
Sir.
And so probably the best way to summarize this is this is the first stage. And so once an application is made, they will, there will also be a secondary engineering phase-
Sir.
-that will address those drainage concerns that you just referred to. And so if the applicant doesn't meet those drainage standards, and I see one of the engineers here in the audience now, then they won't be able to move forward. So at this phase, we don't actually examine those engineering standards or those drainage standards.
Sir.
But you can know as a neighbor in the community that those are going to be addressed. Also, and the chair has pointed out, they also put in the, the staff also put in the DPCs or the development plan conditions that the developer will be required to properly address any existing sinkholes on the property.
Okay, yeah, that was number seven, I think, that she stated on her, was number seven.
Yeah.
Yes, I heard that.
I don't want to give a really long summation there, but what does properly address it mean? There are standards, engineering standards, that are in place to address sinkholes. And of course, we live on car's topography here.
Right.
It's pretty commonplace.
Absolutely, I understand.
And so essentially, they dig down, they find the crevice, they build it back up with a base and they will address it that way. If they don't address it properly, then once again, they won't be able to move forward. So, yeah, that will be inspected as well if there's a, if there's a sinkhole. It's a mitigation process.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you for coming out, thank you for your service, and thank you for coming out and expressing your concerns.
Could I ask, though, as far as what stipulation our neighborhood has any different than Magnolia and Covington's neighborhoods as far as maintaining the integrity of the community and established neighborhood structure?
Yeah, it's a great question and I'll speak to this and staff may want to follow up. The concern there is we have a number of homes that were damaged by the tornado, which means we're going to have a rash, if you will, or a lot of rebuilding. And those communities, we want them to have an opportunity to say whether they want some multifamily in those communities or they want to maintain the integrity of those communities as they currently stand. And also, I think it's because of the zoning that's in place, that like, the zoning is, there's multifamily zoning, RM3 zoning in those areas. And so I, and just so you know, we have not put the moratorium. We did not, that was the city commissioners. And what they're saying is, hey, we want to look at this and we want to, if, we want to make sure the zoning is correct before we allow for building permits to go back out. And I think what you're going to see is you're going to see them try to clean up that zoning that was done, that's probably not the right zoning for that area.
Yeah.
And this not being, but this is not being, you know, they're not asking for a multifamily. This is not an RM3, RM4 zoning that's being asked for tonight. So for your community, the, probably one of the reasons it hasn't been addressed, unless your community was damaged by the tornado, and if it was, then that may be something that the staff could have a conversation with you about.
Well, if you jump back to the zoning map, the light yellow, or it almost looks white, but you know, the neighborhood back here and everything, north, it's a single-family currently.
Right.
And so the neighborhoods that were involved with the moratorium are currently zoned multifamily, while predominantly use in those areas is single-family. So I don't know that that would necessarily apply in this case because the proposed application tonight, the RM2 is a multifamily zone. It's hard to see without zooming in, but part of the property involved in the application tonight is zoned RM2 multifamily, which would allow by right the construction of a duplex if the single-family home wasn't there. So they're requesting actually to change that to a single-family zone for the construction of the twin homes.
Another way to summarize that might be, we're actually downgrading, if you will, the current zoning. They could do more there, but they're going back to two single-family residences here, whereas currently by right, they could, well, correct me if I'm-
Don't bother bringing it in front of us.
Correct me if I'm wrong, they could build a multifamily structure there.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, so back to your original question about maintaining the integrity of your neighborhood. We have instances in those neighborhoods that we've, that we've just talked about-
Sir.
-where they have, just by right, they don't even have to come before the planning commission, they could just build some multifamily properties there. And what the commission is doing is saying, hold on, let's just give us time to examine what's here, just to make sure that we don't go down the wrong path.
I respect that.
Yeah.
What they're trying to prevent, three houses, well, were knocked down.
I can respect that.
Yeah, somebody combined it or something like that.
I can respect that. Just one other, respectfully, if I could ask, though, if, what might happen with the home that is already there that is in disrepair?
Well, we can't, we can't address that.
I appreciate that, but just, I just wanted to put it-
But we're, that is out of our purview.
Okay.
I would suggest maybe you ask Mr. Whitty after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, sir, for your time. Thanks for coming out. Is there anybody else, anybody else tonight in the audience who has a question? Yes, sir, if you'd approach the microphone, please? If you'd state your name and address, please, sir?
Tim Van Meter, I live at 2324 Bellevue Court.
Swear to tell the truth, Mr. Van Meter.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I guess my point is, I've been in Bowling Green my whole life, I've built my whole life, as you have. You know, just because you put a property line down the middle of it, doesn't mean that it's not a duplex. When somebody drives by, they see a duplex, you know? You drive all the way through our neighborhood, you can drive all around Crestmore, wherever you want to drive to, and in the area that's called Crestmore, there's no duplexes. So however you want to look at it, however you want to do it, it's still a duplex, it's still a multifamily house. More than likely, the guy's an investment, you know, person, he's going to keep the house, he's going to keep those two pieces of property, and he's going to rent those pieces of property, right? Which is what I would do as a businessman. You know, my only gripe is, again, when you, when you're in our neighborhood and you're driving around, right, you see single-family homes, you know? I just, and you, back to your point you made, that he could build a duplex on that property. He can't build a duplex on a property unless the property is divided, correct?
Staff will have to address that.
He would have to tear the house down.
You could either add on to the existing home-
Right.
-to where it then becomes part of a duplex. Or if the home were demolished, then you could build a duplex back.
That's correct. But I mean, in this instance, we're going, and I would encourage you to go out there and drive by and look at it, you know? It is a very, very small piece of property, right? You know, in this instance, you've got a guy, a business guy, who has figured out, hey, this is just big enough for me to be able to divide this piece of property, me be able to put a townhome in here, call it a zero lotline house, and get three rental units on my one piece of property. It does not, it is not ambiguous to our area at all, you know? And I just, from a builder, from a guy who's built houses, duplexes, hotels, convention centers, you know, just because you put a property line down the middle of it and you stick it in the middle of somebody's neighborhood, it's still, to me, it's still a duplex. So, and I just want to make that comment. I do appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Any other comments from the audience tonight? We appreciate you gentlemen showing up tonight. So we would call for a motion for the zoning map amendment on this proposed property, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditions upon a general development plan docket number 20223ZBG. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, the motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approves and goes to the Bowling Green City County Commission. Thank you all for being here tonight. Ben, is there any new business for tonight?
Just a discussion item. I just mentioned that we have posted our next video for the comprehensive plan updates, our economic development element. If you watch that, let us know, we'll get you two hours of training. Okay. The, we did partner, we were able to partner with the Chamber of Commerce on that. We, they lined us up, oh, somewhere north of 10 interviews with 10 different people to address each element, so it turned out, turned out pretty good, I think. So, you know, economic development, something we do pretty well here, but there are some things, of course, always to work on, but encourage you to watch that. That's really all I have, unless you have any more questions about the moratorium and what we're kind of doing with those, with those neighborhoods.
Did you get the SUV order?
Did order that. We'll be going to ask for approval for that whenever we are able to have another board meeting. And I'm glad we went ahead and ordered it because that did slide out. Now we're at 26, 28 weeks, so it will be most likely August or September before we, before we would get that. Interestingly enough, the fiscal court had some vehicle purchases in front of them their last meeting as well, and it was a very, very similar situation. I think there were, those were trucks, but they were still looking at 20, about 18 to 20 weeks on those two, so, still.
How many things do we have on the agenda next week?
Rachel, do you know?
There are the four future land use map amendments that were, it's a special political board meeting because of the last board meeting, we compared the one, the application, and then it's three times changing, so it's at least seven, is that right? And then you have five today because of the march of the meeting.
We'll say, just, obviously, with those, some of those were obviously pushed from weather where we missed a couple of meetings, but the volume that we're experiencing has right, skyrocketed right back up. We've got tons of new, new contacts, new applications, new rezonings, new projects just coming from all angles at us right now, and both from local people and out-of-town people. So it's still, still continues to go, yeah.
All right, commissioners, thank you all for being here, staff, and everybody be safe driving home. Thank you.